I call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, August 14, 2024, here in the Village of Westmont. You have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson is here. Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Zakiri.
Here.
Chairperson Carmichael.
Here. Okay.
Yeah.
We have a quorum.
Yeah.
Y'all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reminder, everyone, silence your phones. And next item is the approval of the minutes of the July 10, 2024 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Uh, so moved. Lavoy.
Second, Zakiri.
Motion, Lavoy. Second, Zakiri. Motion second. Discussion of those minutes. So you can unroll call, please.
Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri.
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes. Minutes approved. Another old business, there is none, and uniquely for this commission, new business, there is no new business. And at this point, we're going to adjourn into executive session. So I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss security procedures and training pursuant to Section 120/2, Paragraph C8 of the Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Scales.
Second, Zakiri.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes, and Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes.
Can you make an announcement that we're turning to executive session, but we're going to return to open session for the remainder of the adjournment?
Certainly. And for the public notice, once the executive session is complete, we will be returning here and continuing the commission meeting.
Thanks.
I'm calling the regular meeting of the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission back into session. Here we have roll call. Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Scales.
Are we doing roll call? Sorry to miss that. Here.
Commissioner LaVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Zakury.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson's here. Chairperson Carmichael.
Okay, next item on the agenda is open forum. The public comment rules and procedures are set forth in Chapter Two, Section 2-66 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances. Public comment is allowed for matters of public concern that are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Is anyone present who would like to speak to any issue for the village that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Under miscellaneous, we have general updates. First is a discussion on the zoning ordinance update. And I think Senior Planner Williams will address this.
Correct. So we have three discussion items tonight. Two of them are largely just for informational purposes before we move into the public hearing portion. However, we can discuss them and if you have questions on anything, happy to discuss. The first one's going to be on our new approval procedures where we're making some slight adjustments. Second one's going to be on the public and institutional zoning district, which will be a new zoning district that we will be proposing. And then the last one is on accessory dwelling units or ADUs.
And excuse me, Scott, but I would point out that this issue, this item, is not a public hearing. And therefore, public comment will not be permitted. But everyone's welcome to listen to this commissioner's discussion. The public will have the opportunity to weigh in and comment at the public hearing, which is estimated to take place later this year.
Thank you for that. So our first one is approval procedures. Everybody has the memo. It lays out all the procedures that are being proposed. On the front, you can see it's a chart that tells you what's a public hearing, what's recommendation, what's in review, and who does what. I won't go too in-depth on this particularly. I'm just going to go straight into the processes. There's three that aren't really changing. So the zoning ordinance text and map amendment process is the same as it is currently. It's reviewed by the zoning administrator staff. Public hearing is Planning and Zoning Commission, which is this body. And then the final decision's up to the Board of Trustees. We largely aren't changing much with this. It's largely a change in some of the evaluation criteria so we can be a little more transparent with what we're voting on. And it's clear in the code what those changes are. Additionally, some map amendments for planned unit developments and overlay districts and then the B3 developments will require a rezoning or map amendment to go through a development process, which I talked about later on. But that's not changing much. The special use permit process is also not changing much. That's largely going to be the same process as the text amendment and map amendment process, how we've always operated. We have some authority to -- staff will gain some authority when somebody wants to make a minor change to their special use site plans and things like that. However, any major changes would always have to come back to the commission and then ultimately the village board as a new case. Next, we have variances. These are also staying the same, but we're going to list out improved criteria to help with some transparency that's in our code. So a lot of this is just cleaning up the code so it's clear to petitioners and staff. Next, we have site plan process. So in their current code, we've had issues with people trying to make -- or petitioners trying to make minor changes when they run into issues on site. For example, they find a utility easement and they're halfway through construction and they have to stop and come back in to get approvals because they want to move one tree or they have to move the building a foot in one direction. So our current answer is you have to come back in and go through this whole process again to make that amendment. That's not how a lot of municipalities currently operate. A lot of them don't have site plan processes in general, but more of them at least have administrative site plans is what we call them. So in our proposed site plan process, what we're doing is splitting up major site plans versus administrative site plans. So site plants in general are going to be required when the principal building is enlarged or when there's an increase in 1,000 square feet of the impervious area of a site or a lot coverage. Or when a facade is changing up to 50% in the downtown area. That requires them to go through a site plan process. Now, that's broken up into two separate processes. One is major site plants. That is what you are usually looking at when we come through here. That would be the normal process of review by the zoning administrator and staff. Public hearing or hearing and recommendations, Planning and Zoning Commission is the recommending body. And then the final decision's up to the Board of Trustees. Those would be required for significant new buildings and significant changes to a site. For administrative site plants, we have taken some of the authority from the commission, the Board of Trustees, in what we're trying to propose. So the review in those cases are for much smaller projects where they're meeting every -- everything in the ordinance. So there's no variances required. There's no special requirements through special use or anything like that. Those would be eligible for the zoning administrator to sign off on as a site plan approval. However, we still have the ability, we would still have the ability to move anything into that major if we feel that it needs to be seen by the public or a final vote by the Board of Trustees. So that's a major change that we have here from our current requirements. Our current requirements are pretty strict compared to surrounding municipalities for site plants. And then we get into what's somewhat of a new process, which is development plans. So there are new set of approvals and processes that take place of the current PD plan development and B3 district approval process. If you don't know what a development plan is really, it's really a overall large bird eye view of a site and what they're going to do with it. Usually, you have the development plan, which is like a Usually you have the development plan, which is like a master plan of sorts. And then you have site plans, which fit into these puzzle pieces for different areas. So if you have a resort, you have tennis course, you have a pool, you have golf course, you have a hotel. They might not be ready all at the same time to go through a site plan process. So the site plan process gets into real specifics about setbacks of things and those items. But they want to make sure that they can have those. They go through the development plan process to get the big picture items out of the way. So that we know they're going to come back for a site plan eventually for those very specific items. So for the development plans themselves, they're going to be required for the planned unit developments, overlay districts, and then the B-three district where the current resort district is. And then they're going to be optional for other development projects that are larger and which require like concept presentation and of those sorts or when a project's going to be phased out. Or they're going to have large additions in the future and they want to make sure that that's okay now before getting into specifics. So it opens up to allow petitioners to come in and get that approval so they understand that the commission or trustees are on board with that plan at least. But they'd always have to come back in for a site plan approval for those major ones. So in addition to the development plans, we have amendments to those. So if they need to make a change to a development plan for whatever reason, that's broken down into minor amendments and then major amendments. Minor amendments is reviewed by staff to make sure that it is a minor amendment. We will have criteria built into these development plans to make sure that we know, we can be transparent to the petitioner when it's a minor versus a major. So once a minor amendment, zoning administrator reviews and staff reviews, the final decision is done by this commission for those minor amendments. So you're not a recommendation body at that point. You're just the final say. For the major amendments where they're changing uses of a site or there's very large changes in the plan, completely different concepts, those would go through the normal staff level review, the hearing recommendation at this body, and then finally a decision by the Board of Trustees. And those would just be processed basically as new development plans in general. But those are the major changes that we're looking at for our processes at this point. In addition, that's not mentioned in this memo, is we do have an appeals process that's not changing. We rarely have appeals to decisions. So I won't get too involved into that section as it's not something we deal with day to day. We can discuss if you have questions, input. If nothing, that's okay as well.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Adam, our planner, is going to talk about the new public institutional district. We did present this at CDC, the Community Development Committee, which is a committee of the whole. And they've discussed this as well.
Thank you Scott. So yeah, tonight's second discussion is going to be on the new P district. For tonight's discussion, it's just going to be on the bulk regulations and the uses that our consultant has proposed. Stafford is still deciding the rezoning process, who gets rezoned, when and how. So that's just outside of the scope for tonight. So tonight is just bulk regulations and uses. So the purpose of the P district is really to help streamline the approvals process for institutions. Typically, they're located in residential districts that have bulk regulations and uses that are intended for single-family homes. And obviously, institutions are much larger. So they typically are coming in for many variances to the setbacks, lot coverage, asking for a special use permit. And this is really what this district is being created to, is to reduce the need for all of that. So if you look at the table that's comparing the proposed P district setbacks to what's existing for the R-three district, you'll notice that a lot of them are much smaller than what's existing in the R-three. Again, this is intended to reduce the number of approvals needed. And you'll also notice that the lot coverage is higher than what's allowed in the R-three. And then quickly moving on to uses, our consultant put together a list of what should be special or permitted. And there, I want to highlight that currently religious institutions are special uses in the B-one and residential districts. And our consultant has proposed to keep them as special uses. But if after discussion you all believe that maybe it should be permitted, that's something that we can look into as with any other use that is permitted or special here. And you know, this is really what this new district allows us to do is rethink a lot of that. Additionally, I want to highlight that parks currently in residential districts are all special uses. But our consultant has proposed splitting them into two different categories. The first one being neighborhood parks. That's kind of your limited programming. It's really just a covered area with seating, might have a playground and just an open space. There's typically no parking required or provided. And then you'll have a second category called community parks. This is Margaret's Destination Parks, like Ty Warner or Veterans Memorial, that has lots of playgrounds, open spaces that are programmed specifically for a certain sport or activity and often have a lot of parking because people are coming from all over the village to this park as opposed to just walking down the street. So the consultant has proposed to have the neighborhood parks be changed from a special use to a permitted use and then leave the community parks as a special use. So in the case of a neighborhood park, that would reduce an approval. I do want to highlight that with the smaller setbacks and the more permitted uses, that should reduce a certain amount of approvals. However, site plans will still be required for the kinds of projects that Scott went over with the new criteria. So what staff is looking for from all of you tonight is, do you believe that the bulk regulations are appropriate for the P district? Should they be lowered, hired, fine as is? And for the uses, do you believe that the list is fine? Or should anything be switched from permitted to special, special to permitted, or add any new or remove any uses?
Thank you. So Adam went through a lot there. We, as you know, in past, we've had the park district come in and they had to go through eight different approval processes for parks that had been established for decades. Because they never got a special use originally, because they were already established before that requirement was there. So a lot of times you run into these issues where it should be, that's a no-brainer. They should be allowed there. This gives a lot of the public institutions the ability to rezone their property and have a different set of rules than what the R-three district allows, which most of these properties are currently. The R-three is very restrictive because it's for residential. It's not really meant for these larger uses and that's why they're all special uses in that district currently. So with the new district, there would be a new color on the map. This specific district is meant to be scattered throughout the village. Because a lot of the public institutional uses are scattered throughout the village because they serve many different areas. This is not limited just to public institutions, but also includes religious institutions, the private institutions as well that could potentially rezone into this specific district. We're still working on the purpose statement for this district, so we didn't include it here. However, a lot of this is provided by our consultant, heavily influenced by surrounding villages. So we're kind of behind the ball in this case for this district to be implemented. A lot of communities have it already because a lot of public institutional uses have very unique needs compared to private businesses and residential properties. So Adam mentioned that we're still molding this portion. We took it to CDC. One of the changes we made after CDC was reducing some of the bulk standards. So we have a new set of bulk standards shown here that give a lot more leeway for these institutional uses, public and institutional uses. Additionally, we broke out the different types of parks. As when the park district was here, they mentioned they had different definitions for their parks and how they implement their plans. So we want to match that so that we're on the same page. And we've also included governmental uses, so like a village hall or a public works as well.
And safety service is police and fire?
Police and fire. It could likely also include garages for housing some of their vehicles and things like that.
Why is the library special use? I mean, wouldn't that fall into like?
I don't disagree. I think it's because currently it's a special use in our R-three and I think our consultant just carried it over. Currently, the library's in the OR-one district, I believe. But that'd be one of those properties that could, if they ever want to expand or be rezoned to allow those bulk standards, the greater bulk standards could happen.
Okay. I think it's a great idea personally.
Typically, like if a village hall or a church or a library wants to go in a residential district, that's a special use because it has potentially unique impacts on residents as opposed to being in a business or other district. But in this case, it's going to be its own zoning.
So yeah, I guess some of the changes would be if, let's say, there's a new library being proposed on the south side of town. They would have to, we would recommend they would go through the rezoning process. And then if it's labeled as special use, the special use process at the same time. And likely additionally, a site plan, so we know what they're doing there. Or a development plan, whichever, where they are in that process, we wouldn't know. But a lot of public hearing would take place at that rezoning. And you would hear basically a lot of residents come in for the rezoning if they didn't want to do the special use yet. But usually it's going to be coupled with it if there requires a special use. But it could also, we're not looking for properties to rezone without knowing what's going to be there really.
One of the things that kind of jumps out on the bulk regulations under minimum lot width is R-three is 60 feet and under the PI district, 50 feet. What kind of a institution can you get into that narrow, is that necessary? I don't know why you would want to reduce that.
I'm not going to say it's right or wrong. I think it's due to some of the current neighborhood parks that we have. Some of them are at 50 feet, I believe. I could be wrong on that, so don't quote me.
Or two lots could be 100 feet rather than 120.
Yeah. We also took CDC, which this commission is probably not aware of, of changing some of the widths for residential. Because we have a lot of 100-foot widths in the residential. That could be subdivided into 50 feet at times. So there was discussion at CDC a while ago to go forward with that implementation. So it would be likely to match the R-three. But we can always move it up if we feel that that's too lenient.
If one of these are in the R-three or the P district and they want to do something that's outside this, it wouldn't matter what district they're in, they would still have to come.
Yeah, so if they can't fit in the bulk regulations, they'd have to come in for variance. If it's a use and it's not shown on the table for the public institutional, they'd have to ask for an amendment to include that use. So it would be no different than any other district. It's just this is really geared towards the public institutional.
I think this will be great on the zoning map. And even though, you know, people would look at it and think it's spot zoning, I mean, it's really not and I think it'll categorize everything.
We will have a purpose statement, basically, implement that it's supposed to be scattered throughout the village. We have not worked out a color yet, so if you guys have suggestions on the color, that works too.
Does the hospital, does that include like outpatient acute care type services?
So it would not include like surgical centers or medical centers, clinics, that type of thing. Those are for the large-scale hospitals where you have an ER and in patient care.
It just seems like more and more, at least what I've seen, is a lot of them are going to those acute care where it's specialized or something. So you've got surgery on this end of town and heart specialist on the north end of town or what have you.
And they would still be permitted use in a lot of our other districts for those smaller specialty clinics and things like that.
But this is more for like a big advocate hospital.
Correct, where there's like a large campus of some kind.
And then what is infrastructure or utility major and minor?
If you ever go down, I'm not going to say if you ever, when you go down North Cass, you see the ComEd power station on the east side. It's to facilitate some of those. I'm leaning towards making those a special use rather than permitted because they can have somewhat of a larger impact in the surrounding area. And it takes offline some properties that we'd like, would want to be developed in the future if it's on a major thoroughfare.
I guess I'll make one comment, Scott. Yeah, this is happening all over, but in some cases, typically, public perception has a lot to do with my comment. And that is that you're basically taking, you know, the governmental stuff that we don't have to do. So the rules are only meant for us and not everybody else. Okay? And that's something that I think that some other communities, what they've done is they've put like a little outstatement in their code where if there's, like for example, if you're going to put a cell tower, you know, on a building that's now in the P district and it's right next to an R-three, well, that's a permitted use and we don't have to go through this process. And now we have people in the public that are objecting. So an outstatement that if that scenario develops, that could change. The administrator could change that criteria based on the particular situation. Because I don't want to give the perception that all government can do whatever they want and the rules are only applied to everybody else.
What we can do in that type of scenario is likely to place, put into our code, we have special conditions that can be placed. Those are like the distance requirement provisions and things like that, implement it into this district. And they would have to meet that before coming in or they'd have to ask for variance if they couldn't meet that.
Or that would, yeah, trigger special use. Yes. So if something triggers special use and it could be any one of, you're trying to write rules, you know, to cover every possible scenario that's going to develop and you won't be able to do that. So.
Well, I'll say for the example you gave specifically, we have a list of accessory uses, which would fall under like if, for example, the water tower, you wanted to put an antenna on it.
Right.
Accessory uses have their own set of rules and process to be implemented. So it's separate for those accessory uses, certain things. But for a cell tower, we're thinking it's literally a tower on a lot and that is all.
It's such a hot button though, so you have to build that in.
So for that scenario, it would be the special use. They'd have to come in no matter what. A utility would have to come in no matter what for those type of major infrastructure type of things.
Was it a year plus ago, we, this commission recommended in the board approve comprehensive zoning regulations for cell towers?
Which we are not touching. Those will be implemented verbatim largely.
John, do we have any properties in town that could potentially be annexed into the village? Like Liberty Park, like, you know, other, I'm trying to think of specific scenarios where if we bring properties in, do they come in under?
They would come in under R-three.
Always R-three, the way the code is written now.
They would have to come in for rezoning if they wanted any other designation. So this, for example, we're not really getting a discussion of what properties we plan on rezoning in the future right now. But the idea is the village would take some authority to rezone their properties to some degree. But we wouldn't be going to churches and saying, you have to rezone or force them to rezone in any way. That's not what we're trying to do. They have, a lot of them have some specific regulations that were processed as PDs or as special uses back in the day. We're not in the, right now, we're not looking to touch any private properties at all. But if they wanted to come in and rezone, we would have them go through the same process as everybody else and they would have to basically say why they should be rezoned. And we would look at the surrounding just like anybody, anywhere, any other rezonings.
So is there something in the code that says like that? An annexation to a property, you know, we want it to come in as a P instead of an R-three?
No, we don't plan on changing that. If, right, we recently just changed it from R-one they used to come in as to R-three because we have a lot more R-three properties and they're the most limiting residential property, one of the most limiting residential properties. So they fit a little neater to. So they fit a little neater to any, any other properties that could be annexed in the future than what our R1 designation was. So we're going to keep the R3 designation for any new annexations that come in.
But the village does have the option, if someone wants to voluntarily annex, to say, we'll only annex you if you rezone to a certain district. And we could do that with the forced annexation as well, but we haven't done that in the past.
Do we really meet, have properties in town still that meet that criteria for forced annexation? I don't think so.
We're getting close on some on the south side and Liberty Park, parts of it at least.
Yeah. The last time we did a forced annexation was, I believe, last year, late last, or early last year, maybe. But we forced annex in, I think, about six properties on the south, east corner of the town.
Yeah. But those, those situations are few right now.
You and far between, yes. Yeah.
Is 45 feet for the maximum building height stuck in stone, or is that?
No.
This seems kind of small. I mean, that's barely, not even four stories.
I think the idea behind that specific height regulation is because our current existing code, when you go through the non-residential uses in the residential district, so the R3 district allows, or doesn't permit, but has special uses for parks and governmental type of uses.
I'm just picturing like a hospital or religious institution.
And I would say it has a pretty big impact, depending on where it's being placed, if we go that high. Currently, a lot of our taller buildings are on Pasquenoli, and it's at the edge of town near the highways. There's not as much impact to the residential purposes.
In terms of shadowing and sunlight and things of that nature?
Exactly. So that's a carryover from our existing code, the 45 feet specifically.
So if a hospital wanted to go 60 feet or whatever, they would need to come in for a variance.
Yeah, if they were to go into this P district, yeah.
If they're going to go in the P district, got it.
I'll go with it.
Any other thoughts? Well, thank you. And thank you, Matt. So our last discussion is on ADUs, accessory dwelling units. This is another item we took to CDC, the Community Development Committee. We took it back on May 30. They were in favor of incorporating primary dwellings, accessory dwelling units in primary structures and accessory detached structures, like garages specifically. So they've asked basically to create some regulations specifically for accessory dwelling units, and then have the discussion of if we should even implement them at the public hearing, so we can gauge the public interest in it. So tonight's discussion is largely just not on the use itself of accessory dwelling units, because you've already gotten some guidance on that, but on the specific regulations that we could place on them if we were to implement them. A lot of what-ifs, I know. So bear with us as we, as we go through a lot of these, these, the things we bring to you are largely major changes that we're making. And a lot of them have gone to CDC as well, so we could get input from the committee of the whole. So if you don't know what an accessory dwelling unit is, they're usually a second housing unit on a single-family residential lot. They can be attached or detached. They can be above garages. They can be their own smaller structure. They normally have a separate living space for somebody and a kitchen and bathroom embedded in it. A lot of times you hear them called granny flats or mother-in-law suites. And in those cases, usually there's a family member living on site, but they, they want to be separated so they can still have their own life.
What about the father-in-law?
Yeah, there you go. So we have, we have the ability to regulate this as much as we want or don't want. We can make it a special use. We can make it have special conditions. We can have parking requirements. We can limit the bulk of the structure itself if they're going to have an ADU in it. Adam and I have gone through villages in the immediate area. I'm not going to go through all this general information that's in this memo. You can do that on your own. I can interpret anything if you have questions. There's not a ton in DuPage County currently for ADUs. A lot of times, ADUs are to fill missing middle housing of some kind because rents or properties are too expensive for people of lower income or middle income. So that's why you see them implemented a lot of times. But additionally, they have ADUs if they need somebody, if somebody wants, needs to live on site for medical reasons or aging in place or something like that. So some of the considerations we're looking at, and if you flip to the back, it gets into some, what we believe would be the best route to go if we were to implement this use specifically. And we can provide guidance to our, our consultant to have this implemented and then have it as probably one of our primary discussions at the public hearing. So right now, or for other, other places, a lot of times, they, they implement design standards where the front of the building has to match the, the existing house structure. So it can't be just a hodgepodge addition of some kind. A lot of times, they limit the size and then the setback and then what the floor area can be, among other things. And then usually, they require that you can, you can show that you have parking on site that can accommodate an additional dwelling unit, or accessory dwelling unit. So currently, what we're looking at, after looking at surrounding municipalities, is to have these regulations in place when we move to the public hearing. So the type would be internal to the existing structure, attached to the existing structure, the primary residency, or detached. And largely detached, meaning above garages or as separate structures. They would be permitted in primarily the R1, R1A, R2, and R3, which are largely only single-family detached housing that are allowed in those districts. We recommend that if we do implement them, they should be a special use, so we understand what they're doing on site. Additionally, we recommend having a minimum requirement of 220 square feet to a maximum of 800 square feet. A lot of that is largely implemented because a lot of studio apartments are at 220. And that seems to be the bare minimum that most municipalities are willing to have. For the height, they must, we're recommending they must follow the zoning district's height limit, which is the, or the height of the principal structure, whichever is less in that case. And then it would have to follow the detached requirements for bulk. Additionally, we're going to look at for location, they would have to still maintain the setbacks of what a primary structure is required to maintain, because you would have somebody living in that building. So it should be separated from, from the neighboring properties. We're recommending that it also be set back a certain amount from the existing primary structure if it's an addition, or from the primary dwelling unit. Lastly, we have, it must be located 10 feet from the principal structure if it's detached, and on 10 feet from the rear lot line if it's detached as well. And then, I mentioned this earlier, but we would like to implement a design standard, so it's, it fits into a single-family district. So it's not looking like a random unit that's also on the property. We want to make sure that it's implemented well, so it's cohesive for the rest of the community or neighborhood. And then lastly, we want to make sure that parking is being meant for that use specifically. So we don't see parking on the street of any kind. We want to make sure that onsite parking is provided, albeit a driveway, not literally parking spaces. So they have that onsite as well.
How do you determine that if you have a two-car garage?
Generally.
Then you need to have a third, room for a third?
Well, it wouldn't have to be in the garage, per se. It could be just on the driveway, as long as it's all fully on the private property.
But it says it must require an additional off-street space from what currently exists.
So if, let's say, so you have a driveway that it can only fit one car currently on your property, you'd have to be able to extend your driveway to allow a second car to be parked there, if there's only one person living in that ADU.
What would the difference be between putting an addition on your house or putting that on your house? Isn't it the same?
It's difficult. Usually, ADUs have a separate door to the outside, and sometimes they can be separated from the actual, like a wall separation between the primary dwelling. So there are differences that could be made. A lot of times, you see it so they don't actually interact with the primary residency at all.
But isn't that special use to put an addition on your single-family?
Correct. But it would be if you're going to have somebody else living basically in a separate unit onsite, is what we're proposing, not saying that's required right now.
Lots of times, an existing, let's say, a large detached garage can be converted. People probably now may do it illegally, but if they know they can do it legally, but they may, might not meet the 10-foot setback from the rear yard, or the existing design facade might not match the house. And all they want to do is fix out the inside of their garage to make it a living space. How would something like that get processed when it doesn't meet the standards?
It would have to be processed with variances if it can't meet that bulk standard requirement. The thought being for the setbacks, and we can discuss the setback requirements or anything like that, but the, the thought is if somebody's living there, they're going to have greater impact on the surrounding neighbors. Usually, if you have a detached garage, you're just coming in and out and then using it on the weekend, usually. So that's where that thought processes.
Including like lighting impacts.
Correct, yeah.
Can I go? Are you done?
Yeah.
I have two questions.
Yep.
I generally like the idea of the ADUs. What are some of the known drawbacks of them?
So one of the major glaring issues that was discussed at CDC is because we're not a home-rule community. If somebody's renting out that to a separate person, we really don't have authority unless, unless we go through a special use process to say, you can't.
Make it a rental?
You can't make a rental of some kind, something like that. However, it gets very sticky legally. I'm sure my attorney can link, talk about it more. We can place special conditions. We can't say a certain class of people can't live there. You can't say, you can't specifically rent it out to somebody that's on your family.
We can't say you can't rent it out at all.
Yeah, correct. Yes.
Because I'm charging the in-laws rent, for sure.
Or that it has to be a relative for.
Right.
And I'd say for enforcement issues, we at staff level don't want to implement something where we have to be checking an affidavit or something like that to make sure that whoever's living there is supposed to be living there. A lot of communities that are home rule have affidavits where you have to sign that says they're blood-related or something like that. And it gets really complicated. And that's why we're, we are going to bring it up at the public hearing to have further discussion on it.
Do they tie into this, to the utility system, to the main, or they go into the existing structure?
So I've seen it both ways. So I've seen it, one where basically they, they attach a second water meter in some communities. Other times, it's just done through the, the primary residency. It really just depends on how Public Works does theirs, their requirements. We don't really have a ton of authority on this commission related to that.
Just curious. And then the last question I have is the 10-foot from the principal structure. Some of our lots are deep, super deep. Like, you could put one 30 feet from a principal structure and still have plenty of room in those lots. Is there a specific reason that it's 10 feet?
Yes. So the specific reason is that usually the fire department doesn't want fire hopping. So they don't want it closer than 10 feet. So the 10-foot would be the minimum.
Okay, so it's a minimum. It doesn't have to be exactly 10 feet?
Correct, yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion.
And 10 feet is like even, if you will, to build a pergola. It has to be 10 feet from the main structure, right?
Yeah, anything, basically.
That's probably following the.
Basically, what would be implemented is any, it's any building, any building, enclosed building has to be 10 feet from the, the primary structure currently, or more.
Okay, got it. Just curious. Thank you.
I'm not sure about incorporating design standards. This town is different, you know, neighborhoods and different houses and different sizes. And personally, I like that. But I think if you start getting too like nitpicky in adding the design standards, that's kind of like over the top.
What are your, what are your thoughts on like, if, if it were to be set back from like the front entrance or something like that? So a lot of times, you see nowadays, houses are built with front-loading garages, and then the entrance is kind of set back. Would you be in favor of if the primary dwelling needs to be in front of the accessory dwelling unit, or you don't care? It doesn't matter to you?
Oh, so it's like not visible?
It's not as visible.
As visible.
Yeah, I have seen in some communities that have maybe more relaxed design standards that if it is going to be facing a public street, it still has to be designed to look secondary. So it's not like you have two equally designed main entrances there. So it's like, that's clearly an accessory dwelling unit.
That makes sense.
Yeah. I think generally, like, if ADUs are going to be a route which the village goes, and I think you want to, you know, you want to make it less restrictive to build an ADU. You know, the main drawback with, with an ADU is, you know, and I've done a ton of reading on this because I've known that it was coming down the pipeline. But I mean, I feel like the main issue is just lots that are suitable for building ADUs, you know. You know, like, there's nothing in here, something that sticks out to me is, like, if you're going to do an ADU, can you get auto-granted for a higher lot coverage? Because I feel like a lot of lots just aren't suitable for ADUs. So you go through this whole thing and maybe you'll get one or two ADUs built, I mean, as like a detached, you know, maybe not a garage conversion, things like that.
But there's still are parts of town that have big lots.
There are.
North, southeast, west, I mean, they're all over.
Sure. And I'd say there probably, there's probably less lots that are suitable, I would think, than are suitable to build an ADU, generally speaking.
So what I'm hearing from you is, it sounds like you wouldn't want it to be a special use. You would just want it to be permitted, building permits, they need to meet just the bulk standards of the current primary building, basically.
And with a permitted use, they would still have to come before this commission with a site plan? Like, no, no?
If it's permitted, they wouldn't have to come through at all unless they needed a variance or something.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm unsure on that. Problem with reducing lot coverage is lot coverage is in place to protect flooding.
Understood, understood.
Stormwater management issue throughout the village, so.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just thinking like, you know, people want to do a lot of things, like they want to, especially now, a lot of people, the home is, you know, post-pandemic, they want to build a patio, they want to do all this stuff. And then if you want to build an ADU, it might be, you know, it might be maxed.
And that would be, I think.
If the village allows it.
If, if it were to be done, I think the best process would be for them to get the variance, only because I think usually properties that are already at their maximum lot coverage know they're at their maximum lot coverage when they come in. They know that if an addition's done, they'll have to get some type of variance. I think a hardship needs to be placed to say, why does this lot get to go up to a certain amount and doesn't? That makes sense. But I don't disagree on the lot coverage conversation. However, we, we aren't looking at changing those regulations currently.
I think this is the way of the future in, in order to avoid things down the road, you know, to get this in place, I think is, it's a good thing.
I like the idea of the ADUs, personally.
Yeah, so do I. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of ADUs generally. I just want to make it easier to build ADUs, you know, for people, because I think it requires.
I want it easy, too. You know, I don't like overregulation. You guys know that.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want to make it hard for people. Because when this comes up, it's not a matter of, oh, I want to build something on the top of my garage. It's not that. It's that my father needs a place to live.
Detached.
And I can't afford to put him in a nursing home, and I need to do something now. I don't want the village stepping in and making it hard for me to do that. I don't want the 200 square feet, because people are really modifying their existing homes to accommodate that. And it might not be 200 square feet. So why overregulate it?
I don't disagree with anything you're saying. I, I don't disagree with anything you're saying. I think a lot of this stems from, a lot of suburbs don't-
Yeah.
Have anything-
I get it.
Allows them.
Get it, but.
So we're, we're, I'd say, yeah, I'd say we're, we're going to be one of the first ones in the area to implement anything that allows them.
Yeah, ADUs are great because, you know, families, I mean, like, hey, your, your daughter, your son could get divorced. Hey, I need a place to stay. Like some, some separation. I can't afford to go anywhere else now. That would be great for our community to just say, hey, we have those options here. I love the idea, but I don't want to overregulate it. I don't want the square footages. I don't want the special use to come in to ask you if you, if my mother can live with me. Sorry. Where'd that come from?
Yeah.
What about love carriage?
You know, that kind of upsets me that I, I had to come to the village to ask if my father can live with me.
Yeah, I think it also just, you know, it, it will require a lot of education on part of the landowners and potential buyers, just generally.
Yeah, and we can, we can do this as if, what I'm hearing is we can do this through the permitting process alone rather than having any zoning approvals and it would just be reviewed as a normal building permit of any kind if we want to go that route.
Yeah, I get it. It's like you want to build a garage, a separate garage, a separate building. I get that that has to be regulated and yes, you should do, do some things, but if-
What are your thoughts on like if it's a detached structure, should they come in for a special use then?
Yes.
It's a different building?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'm just saying that, that you have to address the things that, hey, this isn't, you know, I want to build something. This is, I, I have a crisis in my family and I need to have a relative move in with me.
Detached structures?
It really depends. I, I, I don't have an answer. I can't.
I think, I, I think majority of them will be detached structures.
I would say if it's detached, they're still going to have to meet a lot of the building requirements.
Like what about fire sprinklers?
Correct. So they, there's specific fire requirements.
There are developers with the capacity to build it or with fire requirements and all that kind of stuff.
It just snowballs into a lot of-
Yeah. What do we?
And then, oh, I can't have my relatives.
You don't have to. But if you're building a new structure, you do.
Do new homes require sprinklers?
Yes.
They do, don't they?
In Westmont.
Yeah. Like what's-
So-
And, and I'd add to that saying additions may require it after certain square footage is hit, I believe.
So then if somebody wants to build one, are you suggesting perhaps then that there's just a minimum set of guidelines or requirements that they go by and they come in, ask for the permit?
Yeah, so it'd be, it'd be similar to how we normally operate for just building additions in general. The, the reason this is a little bit different than an addition is because it's, it's somewhat an accessory use to the primary use is how it's viewed currently.
Yeah.
However, I have no clear guidance on if, if we want to just let it go through permitting as usual, make sure they're hitting some basic zoning requirements. That's a route we can go for sure.
Well, what's the most major concern? Lot coverage to affect flooding? Is that?
Yeah, we have lot coverage requirements. We have setback requirements, obviously.
Setbacks, lot coverage.
Lot coverage.
Height.
I feel like you're going to run into, you know, if you need sprinkler systems, you're going to run into financing issues. We, you know, like-
I'd say for the sprinkler issue, for the commission, we have-
Yeah.
Yeah, we have nothing we can do about it on our end. We just look at those simple bulk standards really and on the use itself. The fire department has a separate type of use list and it depends on, on the use for what sprinklers are required or fire suppression systems and all of that. But generally, in most cases in this instance, unless it's a some type of addition, it's likely going to require some type of sprinkler system.
Yeah. Have you guys looked at Oak Park's ADU regulations?
Uh, we, Oak Park, sorry, I was thinking Oak Brook. I was going to say Oak Brook doesn't have any.
Oak Park.
Oak Park has, it's not a great comparable community, I'd say, to ours because it's a lot more dense. We largely kept it within the surrounding communities, but I think they were listed as one of the 13 we looked at when implementing them. I can't remember off the top of my head what the regulations were.
Duncan may have done their zoning ordinance.
They did part of it, I believe. Yeah, they updated theirs.
They've got a nice section on ADUs.
Who does?
Oak Park.
Oak Park.
Including the whole like standalone webpage link that lists the regulations and things like that.
And they have much smaller lots in that community than we do.
They have deep lots.
They're very small and squished together usually.
You know, you can run into this short-term rental issue where someone wants to convert something so it can be rented out and a s, income stream for a single-family homeowner and then becomes a party house, but you know?
Not for 800 square feet.
Yeah. And-
Good point.
And I'd say for that specific concern, we still have the nuisance regulations that would be in place in normal code enforcement action.
Yeah.
It's just one of those things, because we're non-home rule, you can't really get in there as much.
Are there any restrictions for short-term rentals in Westmont?
No, and it was discussed with the village board recently at a committee level and they weren't in favor, at least at this time, on regulating it or prohibiting it outright just because I think there's so few of them in town and hasn't been an issue.
Yeah.
So I think they're reserving the right to look at it later.
Yeah, we brought it to CDC last session and when those minutes are approved, we can send them out if you want more information.
I mean, again, I'm for it. I think that there's going to be just, almost none are going to get actually built. If you look at most even major municipalities that have passed ADUs, you know, as a permitted use, there's maybe a handful. Champaign passed them in 2022, they've built zero since. So, you know, it comes down to, you know, lots being suitable, developers that want to build them, that can make money on them, you know, and so on, so forth. So like-
That's the thing. When I look at it, I don't look at it that way. I don't look at it as developers wanting to build. Our community's already built. It's a matter of what, what restrictions and regulations we put on the stuff that's already built. And like, for example, if you wanted to convert your house, a piece of your house, your living room to a, a living quarters, now you got to go out and add a parking space because you want your family member to live with you temporarily because of a crisis. I don't think we should do that. I think we should li, have the avenue open. I think we should regulate, like if you want to build a separate structure or you want to do an addition, make it look like your house, but that's as far as it should go in my opinion.
Do, do we have general agreement for what Commissioner Lavoy said? Basically to limit the regulations for an addition, what we call an internal or attached ADU, to basically be, just be the permitting process and they just have to meet what the current bulk regulations are for that district, for the primary structure? And then to have some separate regulations for if they want to do a detached of any kind, that we can look to our consultant to figure out what other communities have done related to detached.
That's, that's kind of where I would go. Because I understand if you're going to go to detached, now you're a whole different ballgame, but if, if you want to modify or do a small addition on your existing house, I don't think you should really overregulate it.
No, and I think, I think-
I'm pretty strong about that.
Yeah, that's, that's generally what the distinction's been a lot of times in other communities. So it is a route we can, we can go with that. Do we, do we have any advisement on that or in favor of that?
I don't disagree with that.
You said you don't disagree?
I don't disagree.
Oh, double negative, huh?
I'm an English major.
Yeah, I mean, I'm for it. I mean, I'm for making the detached easier somehow too, so I'm, I'll be open to hearing what the consultant says, you know? Because I think, I mean, my opinion is I think that detached-
I see some of those, these that are really nicely done.
Yeah. I've, you know-
But there's one in particular over off, in Clarton Hills, right off of Ogden Avenue, the first house as you turn.
I know who you're talking about.
The white house on the corner.
Yeah.
Very nicely done.
Yep.
Over the garage. And, you know, that, that's attractive and people want that kind of thing. They want that flexibility. I don't think people look at it from the standpoint of, oh, I want to rent that. I don't think people in our community want to do that. I think they want to live here, they want to stay here. They, they want to live around their kids, they want to be there. And, and that's really the, what our community is about.
I'd say we're, we're seeing a lot more what we call aging in place.
Absolutely.
Rather than homes being developed for, for elderly. We see a lot more of aging in place taking, taking hold.
But even if they want to rent, you don't have a problem with that, do you?
No, not off the top of my head. I don't have a problem with that either.
And we, we really can't regulate that in particular. So that is a good point. You'd have to be okay with that and on the other end.
I am okay with it. Yeah.
Any other comments?
Adam?
Oh, no. I'll leave it up to you.
I have another, another couple. If it's detached, would that have a separate address?
No, they would all, I believe they would all be your car to keep.
They'd all be under the same address.
They would have to be the same address. There may be some distinction.
Well, like when you get your mail. I mean, obviously if somebody's living out on a detached ADU.
So we have, so we have, it, it gets very complicated. We have to explain this to residents a lot. So there's the postmaster addressing and then there's a village addressing. So a lot of properties in town are, have a mailing address.
On that or the other.
Downers Grove or Willowbrook or Clarton Hills. And it's because of where their post office is located and who routes their mail. We have village addresses as well, which are separate from that system.
Yeah.
Usually they're largely in line with what they have for numbers and streets. It's just that we have a separate system than they do. So we can't control anything they do on the mailing end. It's up to them.
My understanding though is the village controls the street names and numbers.
Correct, yeah.
And it's just based on previous annexations and stuff, what town they designate properties being in. I know Oak Park requires a separate address for a detached ADU, but they're also home rule and they can have a landlord-tenant ordinance that allows them to do inspections and to regulate rental units. So they may have a need to have separate addresses for that purpose where we're not home rule, so we can't do that right now, but.
That's my understanding at least. Yeah.
But it's not a bad idea.
Be doing A to B, John?
I think that's a good idea just for fire.
I mean, yeah, like if somebody has a heart attack in the ADU out back and you call 911, this is my address, it's like, well, you know, it's, it'd be nice to know right up front when they got, boys are coming, to let them know already that it's in the, you know, the-
How does it work with access? Like if you're, you know, you're building an ADU on the back of a deep lot, for your example, and you have-
Yeah.
A 50-wide lot by 300, for example, and you have a, you know, fence in the front, your garage is, you know, the front of your house and your ADU's, you know, 200 feet back from your lot. And where's the mail going to go then? You know, and you have a fence and it's-
They'd have to figure it out and have a second mailbox or-
Yeah, have one on the street, I guess.
Go to one mailbox or?
Yeah. But I'm just saying, yeah, and like the separate address case then, you know? Things like that. I don't, and that's just like you're, you know, splitting hairs on how to do it, I feel.
I'm thinking of law enforcement and fires, like emergency services and stuff like that. But.
Yeah. I get, we can, I can always talk with, the building commissioner is the one who comes up with new addresses. So he knows more than, than I do about those regulations.
He just throws a deck of cards on his table and picks a number.
So there's, yeah, they have nothing said and sewn for, there's industry standards, basically, but it, it can be manipulated a lot for numbering in streets on our end. That is something we can look at doing.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of the aging in place. You know, people in our community are like that a lot. They don't want to leave. And that's really good. I mean, I, I think that's a good quality of Westmont. We shouldn't make it hard for people to stay.
Well, good. All right, thank you again for the, another discussion night. I appreciate it. It gives us a lot more insight because we, we had no idea going in whether people would be in favor or against. So it's nice to know that we have some consensus of some kind. So we'll go back with our consultant and figure out the more specifics. Next time you'll hear anything related to this, we'll likely be at the public hearing for these three items.
Any idea when that's going to be at this point?
We have, the goal is towards the end of the year, this year. We're currently, just giving you an update, we're currently having our first full draft of it, but we had installments before, which were just kind of hot, hot pieces of the major changes. So we have a full ordinance now, it's going through staff review. We're about, I don't know, halfway through that review as we sit down. So we're moving along. I'll say that we're having a discussion at the downtown Westmont Business Alliance[1689.33]